We'll move on then to our one and only item of the day, item one, which is the Balboa Park Plaza de Panama project, and we will begin with our staff report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the board. My name is Charlie Daniels. I'm a park designer with the Park and Recreation Department, and we are here for the Plaza de Panama Circulation and Parking Structure Project. I'm sure you're all familiar with Balboa Park, but just for a little planning context, Balboa Park is surrounded by the communities of Uptown to the northwest, Center City to the southwest, North Park to the northeast, and Golden Hill to the southwest. The project itself affects two of the sub-areas of Balboa Park. The first is the West Prado sub-area, which includes the California Quadrangle, essentially at the Museum of Man. It includes the segment of El Prado between the California Quadrangle and the Plaza de Panama. It includes the Plaza de Panama itself, the Mall or Esplanade between the Plaza de Panama and the Oregon Pavilion, the Oregon Pavilion and the Alcazar Lot. If you look in the lower left, you'll see the north end of the International Cottages area, which leads to the second sub-area of Balboa Park that is impacted by this project, and that is the Palisades area. In the upper right, you'll see just a sliver of the Oregon Pavilion, but then you see the Oregon Pavilion Lot in the upper right. The International Cottages are top center. There's the Palisades complex, and then the Federal Lot, and you see Park Boulevard over on the lower right. This project early on established six objectives for the park. One of them was to remove vehicles from the core of the park, and by the core, we're primarily referring to that West Prado area, the Plaza de Panama, the Mall, and Pan American Road East. The goal is also to restore pedestrian and park uses to these areas. Another goal is to improve access to the park, also to improve the link between the Prado and the Palisades areas there. For the most part, connected with a few narrow walkways and a roadway at this time. Also to implement a funding plan and to complete the work for the Centennial Celebration in 2015. As I'd noted, project components are, at the heart of it, the Plaza de Panama itself, also the El Prado, West Prado area, and the Plaza de California, Centennial Bridge and Road, the Alcazar Parking Lot, the Mall, also sometimes called the Esplanade, and Pan American Promenade, which is essentially Pan American Road East. It also includes a parking structure with a rooftop park, a tram to supplement the existing park tram, and the Arizona landfill, which is an off-site component where soil would be taken to for excavation of the parking structure. This is a Process Five approval, which means City Council has final approval or denial of the project. It started off with plan amendment initiation to the Planning Commission almost two years ago. This project requires plan amendment and site development permit preparation with community input, which is what the project has been doing for the last 18 months. And then the approval process, as I'd noted, Council has final approval or denial, but for the advisory process, the first step is community, planning committees from the adjacent communities I had noted before. And there's the Balboa Park Committee, which is the recognized planning group for Balboa Park, which is its own planning area. There is the Park and Recreation Board's Design Review Committee, the Park and Recreation Board itself, Historic Resources Board, and the Planning Commission, and then on to City Council for final approval or denial. Because of the scope of this project, it requires plan amendments to the Balboa Park Master Plan, which was first adopted, excuse me, in 1989, and to the Central Mesa Precise Plan, which addresses the Central Mesa in greater level of detail, which was adopted in 1992. The project also requires a site development permit due to impact on historic resources as well as environmentally sensitive lands, namely steep hillsides. The scope of the project also requires an environmental impact report. This project has gone through quite a bit of community input in the last 18 months. It's been to the Balboa Park Committee 17 times. It's been to the Center City Advisory Committee three times. It's been to the Greater Golden Hill Planning Committee three times. It's been to the North Park Planning Committee four times, and it's been to Uptown Planners five times. As far as officially recognized city bodies inside the departments, there's the Park and Recreation Board, it's been there twice, the Park and Recreation Board's Design Review Committee, it's been there once, it's been to Historic Resources Board six different times, it's been to the HRB's Design Assistant Subcommittee once, and it's been to the Mayor's Committee on Disabilities twice. That doesn't include recent meetings where formal recommendations were made. And there have been many other stakeholder meetings that will be gone into in the presentation by the consultant team. As far as previous recommendations, as noted, this has been to the community advisory groups. So on November 9th, 2011, the Center City Advisory Committee voted to recommend approval of the project as proposed, with one condition, and that's that the consultants worked to make the Centennial Bridge more aesthetically pleasing. It's been to the Uptown Planners. On February 16th, they recommended approval of the project as proposed without any conditions. On July 13th, 2011, the Greater Golden Hill Planning Committee voted to oppose the bypass bridge as a principal component. They later took an action on March 14th where they recommended denial of the project, but they did support Environmental Impact Report, Alternative 4-B-I-I-I. On April 17th, 2012, North Park Planning Committee voted to recommend denial of the project without conditions. On May 3rd, the Balboa Park Committee voted 7-4-1 to recommend approval of the proposed plan amendment and site development permits without conditions. On May 9th, 2012, the Park and Recreation Board's Design Review Committee voted 5-4-2 to recommend approval of the proposed plan amendments and site development permit without conditions. And yesterday, on May 17th, the Park and Recreation Board voted 5-4-1 to recommend denial of the proposed plan amendments and site development permit. With that, I'll turn it over to HRB staff.
Thank you. So the action before the Historical Resources Board today is to, one, recommend to the Planning Commission approval of the site development permit and associated findings related to designated historical resources as presented, or, two, recommend inclusion of additional permit conditions related to designated historical resources, or, three, do not recommend approval of the site development permit and associated findings related to designated historical resources. The city's Land Development Code requires a recommendation from the Historical Resources Board prior to the Planning Commission decision on a site development permit for historical resources. The HRB has adopted procedures for making these types of recommendations as follows. The Board shall make a recommendation on only the historical resources aspects of the project. The Board's recommendation shall relate to the final environmental document, the site development permit findings for historical resources, and the project's compliance with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties. If the Board desires to recommend the inclusion of additional conditions, the motion should include a request for staff to incorporate permit conditions to capture the Board's recommendations when the project moves forward to the decision maker. The Balboa Park Historic District has long been recognized as a significant historical resource. The city of San Diego first designated the Prado area of Balboa Park as Site Number One in 1967. The California Quadrangle, consisting of the Administration Building, the Fine Arts Building, and the California Building, along with the walls connecting these structures, were listed on the National Register in 1974. In 1976, the entire El Prado complex from the 1915 California Panama Exposition, including the Cabrillo Bridge, were added to the National Register. At the heart of Balboa Park is the Central Mesa. El Prado, Plaza de Panama, and the Palisades areas, the cultural heart of Balboa Park, comprise the centerpiece of the National Historic Landmark District designated in 1977 as one of the nation's most important examples of urban park planning and exposition architecture, including the buildings and landscapes constructed for the 1915 and 1935 An environmental impact report was prepared for the project. Potential impacts to historical resources were evaluated, and the EIR concludes that the construction of the Centennial Bridge component of the project would result in a significant impact to the National Historic Landmark District. Alternatives to the project that would reduce or avoid significant historic impacts were also analyzed in the EIR. No feasible mitigation is available for impacts to the historic district; therefore, the impacts would remain unmitigable, and the City Council will be required to adopt specific sequel findings and overriding considerations in order to approve the proposed As part of the environmental and permitting review process, each component of the project was analyzed for consistency with the U.S. Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties. Four treatments are recognized in the standards: preservation, rehabilitation, restoration, and reconstruction. The rehabilitation standards acknowledge the need to alter or add to a resource to meet continuing or new uses while retaining the historical resources' character. They focus on preservation and restoration of historic features, as well as introduction of new features which are compatible with the resource yet differentiated as nonhistoric element. Therefore, the rehabilitation standard is the appropriate treatment to use for the proposed Balboa Park Plaza de Panama project. National Park Service staff agrees that the rehabilitation standard is appropriate for this project. The current use has changed from its original world's fair use to now the nation's largest urban cultural park that offers historical, horticultural, educational, and recreational uses for everyone. NPS staff further stated that similarly, the rehabilitation standard has been used for a number of projects at the San Francisco Presidio, a national historic landmark which served as an army post for 218 years and is now an urban national park that celebrates history, environment, and community. The Plaza de Panama component of the project would be consistent with the rehabilitation standards. It would remove non-character-defining features and materials and would enhance the historic appearance of this public plaza while differentiating new work from old. Existing spatial relationships of the plaza would not be changed, and the historic size, scale, and proportions of the plaza would be retained. Compatible pavers would be used. New light standards that replicate the 1915 design and new street trees and lawn panels would be added in their approximate historic locations. Two reflecting pools, similar in concept to what existed during the 1935 exposition, would also be added. These pools would be compatible with the historic Plaza de Panama, yet modern in design and differentiated in style. The El Prado and Plaza de California component of the project would be consistent with all rehabilitation standards. It would remove non-character-defining features and materials and enhance the historic appearance by restoring missing features and materials. New compatible pavers would be added, new light standards that replicate the 1915 design would be added where they existed historically, and new street trees would be planted where they existed in 1915 and 1935. The Alcazar Parking Lot and Walkway would be consistent with all rehabilitation standards. Limited physical changes would be made to nonhistoric elements of the historic district. Visual impacts to landscape features would be temporary. The Mall and Pan American Road would comply with all rehabilitation standards. Although a new feature within the district, the Walkway is relatively small in size and inconspicuously located along the rear of the House of Charm, where there presently is an asphalt driveway. Missing historic light standards and trees would be added where they were located during the period of significance. Nonhistoric asphalt would be replaced with contemporary yet compatible paving materials. The Oregon Pavilion parking structure, rooftop park, and tram would be consistent with all rehabilitation standards. The Oregon Pavilion Parking Lot is a non-contributing element of the historic district and is currently incompatible with the district as a whole. The loss of this surface lot would not impact the district. The new below-grade parking lot would have limited visibility within the historic district and would be concealed from views along Park Boulevard. It would be unobtrusive, and effects to the historic character of the district setting would be minimized. The rooftop park would replace the current nonhistoric asphalt parking lot with landscape parkland where the California Gardens were located historically. The proposed tram service would not require overhead lines or other additions or changes within the historic district. The Centennial Bridge and Road would not be consistent with the rehabilitation standards #2 and #9. While the physical impacts to Cabrillo Bridge from the addition of the proposed Centennial Bridge are limited, the visual impacts and change in spatial relationships would be adverse. The direct visual connection of the Cabrillo Bridge to the California Quadrangle complex, the most important designed relationship in the Balboa Park Historic District today, would be disrupted. Centennial Bridge would result in the intrusion of a sizable new element into the district that would change historic character-defining spatial relationships and would result in direct physical and visual impacts. Grading within the upper rim of Palm Canyon, the use of several concrete and stacked stone-retaining walls and extensive landform alteration related to the construction of Centennial Road would not be consistent with rehabilitation standards. Although not from historic periods, circulation routes would be impacted, adjacent areas of the park would be bisected and cut off by the new road, and existing spatial relationships that characterize this part of the district would be altered. In summary, the project does not comply with rehabilitation standards 2 and 9 because of visual and physical impacts and adverse change in spatial relationships within the Balboa Park Historic District that would occur as a result of the proposed Centennial Bridge and Road. Therefore, the project proposed constitutes a substantial alteration and a deviation from the regulations and requires a site development permit consistent with the municipal code. The draft site development permit includes four conditions related to historical resources. Future construction permits and all improvements must be reviewed and approved by Historical Resources staff prior to permit issuance and construction of those improvements. Final selection of finished materials must also be reviewed and approved by Historical Resources staff for consistency with the standards as part of the construction permit process. Level 1 historic American engineering record documentation must be provided, and historic preservation architect who meets the Secretary of the Interior's professional qualifications must be on-site to monitor work on the Cabrillo Bridge. Site development findings must be adopted by the City Council in order to approve the project. The draft permit findings have been provided for the Board's review. The City Council will have to find that, one, there are no feasible measures that can further minimize the potential adverse effects on the historic district; two, the deviation is the minimum necessary to afford relief and accommodate the development, and all feasible measures to mitigate for loss of any portion of the historical resource have been provided; and, three, denial of the permit would result in economic hardship. Members of the public have raised concerns that approval of the proposed Centennial Bridge as part of the project would result in removal of the Balboa Park Historic District from the National Register or withdrawal of the National Historic Landmark Designation. Removing a listed resource from the Register or withdrawing its NHL designation is a very significant step codified by federal regulations. Merely implementing a project that is not consistent with the standards is not sufficient grounds to warrant its removal. To remove the Balboa Park National Historic Landmark District from the National Register, the Park Service would have to make a determination that the qualities which caused it to be originally listed have been lost or destroyed, based on a restudy of the National Historic Landmark prepared in the same manner as is required for a new designation today. Notice to the property owner, a public hearing process and action by the keeper of the Register or Secretary of the Interior are required. Implementation of the project as proposed would not result in the property ceasing to meet the criteria for listing in the National Register. The qualities which caused it to be originally listed would not have been lost or destroyed as a result of the project. The process to remove or withdraw the listing from the National Register is not underway and is not anticipated. It should be noted that the National Park Service has not indicated, either in writing or on the phone to me, that the landmark listing would be in jeopardy. Overall, siting and design considerations have minimized the potential for significant impacts to the Balboa Park Historic District and individual components within the district. The proposed improvements to the Plaza de Panama, El Prado, Plaza de California, the Mall, and Pan American Promenade would remove vehicles from these historic plazas and pedestrian areas, would restore several historic elements within these areas, would utilize compatible materials, and would return the landscape and hardscape to a more historically appropriate design aesthetic. An increase in parkland and removal of nonhistoric elements would be realized. Staff has determined that supplemental findings for deviation from the Historical Resources regulations can be supported, and a site development permit can be approved. Therefore, staff recommends the Historical Resources Board recommend to the Planning Commission approval of the site development permit and associated findings as presented. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you. That moves us then to the applicant presentation.
Thank you. My name is David Marshall. I'm with Heritage Architecture and Planning, and I represent the Plaza de Panama Committee. I'm going to present about a 30 to 35-minute synopsis of the project, a very complicated project, very involved project, very important project, and I have been asked to address or touch upon the alternatives as well. There's a particular alternative that may be presented today by others known as the Lewis Plan, and I'm hoping that I'll have time, maybe after that is presented, to respond to the historical impacts which we think are significant, about another five minutes or so. I could roll it into this presentation, or I could do it after the Lewis Plan is presented. It's up to you.
If you see fit to roll it into this presentation, go ahead and do so.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, you can go to the next slide. The project objectives were already touched on by Charlie. It is, the key components are removal of vehicles from the park environment. You can go to the next slide. This image or set of images really shows the difference between the East El Prado and the West El Prado. Our project involves the West El Prado, which is still dominated by cars, and is a thoroughfare. East El Prado was closed to traffic. It used to connect all the way to Park Boulevard. It was closed to traffic in 1973. It was very controversial. Institutions were concerned about it because it was a change in the way the park functioned, but it's proved to be very successful, and you can see from these images, and I think everybody that's been to the park knows that that's where the people are, that's right by the reflecting ponds, it's all the way to the Ruben Age Fleet. It's really the goal of making this entire El Prado a pedestrian space. This is a very important diagram. The image on the left shows, in green, all of the existing pedestrian-only environments in the project area. On the right is what the proposed project will do as far as pedestrian-only areas. That's a significant impact right in the heart of the historic district. It's in all of these, it's in the plazas, El Prado, the Esplanade area, as well as the new rooftop park on the underground parking structure, which I'll touch on. To me, this is an image that is critical in your consideration. Just touching on the traffic issues, we talked about one of the goals of the project is eliminating pedestrian-vehicle conflicts. This diagram shows 11 intersections within the project area that are significant problems right now with volumes of traffic and volumes of people. Currently in these areas, there's about 2,500 pedestrians in a typical day, and 5,000 vehicles crossing those same areas. Next image. What this project would accomplish is reducing those 11 to five and reducing the conflicts. Instead of 2,500 pedestrians, it's 700, and instead of 5,000 vehicles, it's only 30, 250 vehicles. That's a significant improvement in the pedestrian and park experience. Now, as part of the EIR, there was a historic technical report that was done by outside consultant Christopher Verplank, who's here today, and I'll bring him up shortly to talk about the evaluation of the Secretary of the Interior's standards. But basically, HRB staff and the independent consultant came to the same conclusions as far as what those impacts, what the impacts of this project are from a historical standpoint. I also want to mention that part of the project team is Kathy Paplava, who's here today as well. She was the park horticulturist for, I believe, 17 years, knows the park up and down, especially from a landscape perspective, and we have consulted her with, wherever there's impacts to trees or landscaping, she has been involved in helping us make those decisions and is available for any questions that are related to landscape issues. This has been touched on already, so I'll just go briefly, but the project components, as you see here, are the Centennial Bridge, which is the upper left, the reconfiguration of the Alcazar Parking Lot. We're not touching Alcazar Gardens, just the parking lot. The Centennial Road, which follows roughly the current road. We have the two plazas, Plaza de California in front of the Museum of Man and Plaza de Panama, of course, in the heart of the park. West El Prado, and then the lower part section below the Oregon Pavilion is where the current surface parking lot is, which is going to be a three-level underground parking structure with a two-acre park on top. This has been touched on as well, and, you know, there's been some, some of the opposition has proposed that rehabilitation is not the right treatment for this project or Balboa Park. In fact, it's been an ongoing approved treatment for many projects in the park, and, next image. Their contention is that only restoration is appropriate. Well, restoration is to bring buildings back to a particular period of time, not taking into consideration new uses. And as we heard, even confirmed with the National Park Service, rehabilitation, which is what we're proposing, is a perfectly appropriate treatment for this project. Now, in addition to there being rehabilitation, as a subcategory to rehabilitation, we're doing quite a bit of restoration. The opponents like to say we're not doing any restoration, but that's not correct. This is just a bullet point list of some of the items that we're doing. Everyone is aware, and it was described, we're reproducing the original 1915 light fixtures that have been gone for, since basically 1917. The new curbs and lawns around Plaza de Panama. The steps in front of the Museum of Art are going to be replaced with what was there when the Museum of Art was still, was new. Configuration of the Esplanade in West El Prado, including the landscape treatments, curbs and lawns. The tree boxes in the Plaza de California are going to be returned historically. We're removing some fences that were created, I'll talk about later, that were added to protect pedestrians in the Plaza de California. And then removal of nonhistoric asphalt and paving and traffic signs from some of these historic areas as well. Now, rehabilitation, we talked about, that's what we're dealing with. The entire project complies with the rehabilitation standards completely except for these two components, which were pointed out earlier. The Centennial Bridge complies with all of it, standards 2 and 9, for the visual and spatial impacts, and for the physical impact of 65 feet of the Cabrillo Bridge railing. That's the only physical feature, historic feature, that's being removed to accommodate this project. The Centennial Road is a continuation of that secondary access for cars. That involves landform alterations, and there's visual impacts, but it's important to point out that staff and the historical consultant agreed with EIR that these were not significant impacts because that area had been previously disturbed and was not consistent with what was there during either of the expositions. Now, I want to focus on the bridge, which is, I think, important to most of us, as it should be. This is a view, I think, did we skip through one image? I have a before image. Yeah, okay. This is showing the visual impact of the Centennial Bridge on the right-hand side. Now, this is not showing any new tree planting. This is showing existing trees and trees that may need to be removed in order to construct the bridge, but this is the visual impact. Our proposal is actually plant new trees because we don't want this feature to disrupt the visual impact of this part of the park. It's there because it needs to be there, not because we think it's beautiful and we want it to be in the forefront. Now, conditions for approval, we're touched on as well, but because this doesn't meet fully with all the standards, we are going through the site development permit process. There's various historical staff approval of the project as it proceeds. There's going to be historic American engineering record documentation of the Cabrillo Bridge because we are physically touching that bridge, and there'll also be historic monitoring This is a diagram, aerial photograph with dimensions added, showing the bridge, and keeping in mind that the Cabrillo Bridge, the bridge proper, that most people think of the bridge, is about the center 600, 650 feet, which is the part with the arches that crosses over the Cabrillo Freeway. The entire bridge, including the abutments, is about 1,500 feet. Now, you can see to the right, the lower right, that's where our bridge connects, and Charlie, I don't know if you could use the pointer at all, but the area that, I guess not, the area to the lower right that is the curve is where, thank you, is where the Centennial Bridge connects. It's immediately across from the Administration Building. Next image. This is an aerial view showing where that connection occurs. This is the 65 to 70 feet of railing that's getting removed. We're not impacting any historic light fixtures. We're not impacting the historic stair. It's basically just 65 feet of 3,000 feet of that railing is being removed for the bridge. And this, the width of the bridge and everything is what is required by city standards in order to function. There's one sidewalk. I will point out that there is no railing on the other side of the Cabrillo Bridge because that's where the Administration Building is, the first building constructed for the exposition. So it's, we're not interfering with the symmetry of this condition. Now, some of the design principles for the bridge itself, in order to qualify as much as possible with the standards, it's to make the bridge compatible, and that includes materials, but again, differentiated. We can't make a Cabrillo Bridge Junior. We're not supposed to do something that looks like it. We don't want to have that false sense of history, and I just lost the screen here. Well, use your imagination. The other issues are, we want to, we talked about the compatibility, we talked about the use of similar materials, and we've, you guys all have hard copies, and I know the other monitors are showing it. There we go. We're using unpainted concrete as the material for the bridge, and also, we, the bridge is within this historic wooded area, which I will elaborate on a little further. Next image, for everyone in the audience at least. Yeah, I can refer to this one. This is a very simple, but it shows the massing and the location of the proposed bridge. It's on six piers. It is slender as possible. You don't see this view, and I'll show you some actual photographs of this area of what it would really look like, but this does show the relationship of the Centennial Bridge. It's connecting from the end of the Cabrillo Bridge to the Alcazar Parking Lot. This is key to our process or our project because in order to get cars out of all these areas we're talking about, you have to give them areas we're talking about, you have to give them another route. The only other alternative is closing the Cabrillo Bridge to cars completely, which has strong opposition from the institutions. It's important to note that 45% of the people that enter Balboa Park enter from the west. To send everyone else around to the east was shown in the EIR to be an unmitigable traffic impact. Next image. Image on the left shows the bridge design as it was earlier in April 2011. And then the image on the right shows the bridge design as it is today, which again is as slender as possible. It's really only, it's nine inches thick at its, at the very end of the bridge. And then we have the piers with the arched opening, which is a reference to the Cabrillo Bridge without mimicking it. And you can see the two traffic lanes and the one sidewalk. This is another view. This is actually that before view. We got slightly out of order there. But this shows the current view from that area. We have another image we can go to. This is the location where the bridge connects. The area to the right, you can see it's a very simple hollow clay tile railing that's stuck out over. This area jogs out, and there's the sidewalk. You can see the traffic signs and other things happening here. Right now, cars drive right through the arch. Next image. This is a rendering showing what that would look like. This is going to be a stop sign, an intersection that gives priority to pedestrians. And this is the connection, and you can also see there's retractable bollards to keep cars from driving through the arch. That becomes a pedestrian and bicycle-only area beyond this point. Now, I want to talk about the visibility of the bridge because I think that's critical to what everybody is concerned about. This is an excerpt from Bertram Goodhue's book. It was actually written mostly by Carlton Monroe Winslow, his chief architect. But this is a caption, and what I pulled out there and highlighted is talking about the first view of the exposition grounds, which is basically from the other side of the canyon. And it refers to the towers, roofs, set in the vivid green of the wooded canyon slopes. You'll hear from, I think, the opponents that the slopes originally were painted, were, I said painted, they're painted in the renderings. They, their comment is that they were flowers and shrubs. Well, we have photographs and we have documentation that these were footed, or wooded canyons with large eucalyptus trees. Next image. This is a image from the History Center, June 1914. The bridge has just been completed in construction. The California Tower is actually in construction. And you could see the area immediately adjacent to the bridge that was the construction staging area is being planted with new trees. These are tree stakes in this part of the wooded canyon slopes that we're talking about. This is what that area looked like about five years later, approximately 1920. The trees are very large. You can see how much taller they are than the Cabrillo Bridge, and they are very much obscuring the area of the location of the proposed Centennial Bridge. This is an image from the bridge itself. Those trees, and they're very, they're very similar to that today. In fact, you know, there, these trees that were, I think, even taller at this time are some of the trees that have come and gone, but there's continuous regrowth and replanning in this area. This shows that the portal, as you're crossing that bridge, that entry portal and the dome and tower were the key components to that entry experience. Now, in order to understand what the visual impact of the, of the Centennial Bridge would be, my office did this survey. Every circle you see there was a location that we went to and took a photograph. Now, there's, I know it's hard to see in that image, but there's about 10 of those that have a green circle around them. That's where we were matching a historic view. We were trying to stand exactly where that historic view was taken. Now, what the colors indicate is that the white circles are areas where you have no visibility of the Centennial Bridge at all once it's constructed. It includes six views from the 163 freeway in both directions. It will not be visible at all from the 163, and that's important because the 163 is its own historic district. The ones you see in yellow, of which there are eight, are ones where you have a partial view of the, of the bridge, usually between trees. And the three areas in red, two of which are on the archery range, which is a restricted area based on the danger of arrows flying in your direction, is where you see the bridge clearly. There's also one, which is the circle to the right, which is red. That's on a little balcony from the California Building overlooking the west. And there, even though you're looking through a tree, you do have a good view of the bridge. But I think it's important to consider, what is the real impact of that bridge? Not what, not what it looked like in somebody's rendering from 100 years ago, but what it looks like today and what it will look like after the project is complete. Now, I have a couple of those views. I'm not going to go through all 38 views, but this is historic view three from about the center of the bridge. And this is that same view today. There'd be no visibility at all of the Centennial Bridge. This is a view after you've crossed over what is now the 163 freeway. So you're actually about three-quarters of the way over the bridge. And the view today, no visibility. Those trees in the foreground are not being touched by the project. Next image. This is the first view of the seven views on the Cabrillo Bridge that you would start to see, the Centennial Bridge. And you could see, maybe Charlie could point above the railing on the right there. That's the, that's a portion of the Centennial Bridge you'd see from this vantage point from your vehicle. This was taken from a car. Next image. This is a view as you'd see from the archery range. This is as you enter the gate of the archery range and are looking toward the, the bridge. It's hard to see here. You can see glimpses of the California Tower through the trees, but none of these trees are being impacted by the project. And, and from this vantage point, there'd be no visibility. So this is one example of one of those views that's obscured by trees. Yes. This is obviously a historic view, taken from the archery range area. Next image. This is as close as possible, showing that same view. You could see a little glimpse of the tower in the upper center, kind of poking through the trees. This is on the grounds of the archery range. And then there is where we've rendered in where the bridge would be visible. So this is one of the partially visible views I showed you. Next image. This is a view from the archery range itself down the hillside. This is an area of the park I had never stood in until we started working on this project because it's, you know, it's just an area that I don't think is heavily trafficked. But this is, you would have a clear view of the bridge. You're actually looking up at it between the bridge and the California Building. You could see all of the, it's important for me to note that all of these images are showing only existing trees. We have not rendered in any new trees in any of these images. We've removed ones that are having to be removed, but in fact, this view will be screened by some of the trees we're proposing to plant. But this is showing worst-case scenario, you know, before the trees are replanted. Yes. This is a view from immediately adjacent to the California Building, or excuse me, the Balboa Park Club, which is in the Palisades area. This is overlooking, this is looking across Palm Canyon. And there is, yeah, thank you, Charlie. There's a little glimpse of the tower beyond. None of these trees you see in this image are going to be affected by the project, and the bridge is not visible. This is another historic view. This is zoomed in quite a ways from the vantage point it was taken from. Next image. This image was taken from what is now the Cactus Garden behind the Balboa Park Club. This is the view you have today. I didn't zoom it in. All of the pictures I took are full-frame images, what you'd see if you were standing there. And we did render in where the bridge would be visible through the trees here. Next image. Okay, now we're across the 163 on the west side. This is a, one of those iconic views that clearly it's, it's a view that a lot of people associate with Balboa Park. I want you to note that even in this view, you don't see any part of the Museum of Man California Building, other than the dome and the tower. And the, the far end of the Cabrillo Bridge is obscured as well. This is taken from approximately 1940s. This is the view today. This is taken from basically Nate's Point Dog Park, and it's showing the, the bridge rendered in between the trees. Again, not, not showing any newly planted trees. Am I supposed to sing? Okay, next image. All right, now, talking about iconic views, this is another iconic view. This is from the north of the Cabrillo Bridge, looking back toward that same composition that Goodhue was focused on, of the dome and the tower and the bridge. Next image. This is that view today. I had to kind of climb down the hill between some homeless encampments to get this photo, but this is what it looks like today, and there's no visibility at all of, or would be of, the Centennial Bridge. Next image. Another historic postcard view of that side. Next image. This is, believe it or not, that same view today. A lot of trees in the foreground, but even without those trees in the foreground, the Centennial Bridge would not be visible. I just want to touch on briefly another aspect of the project, which is the Alcazar. I'm going to walk you through the other components. Alcazar Parking Lot. The footprint of the parking lot is virtually the same as it is today. The reason we're regrading it is the current parking lot is too steep for wheelchairs. The cross slope is more than 2%. And so we're making this fully ADA compliant because this is being repurposed as a disabled access or disabled parking only and valet staging, as well as a drop-off area, which is the portion nearest the Alcazar Gardens. I know there's been concern about sound impacts to the Alcazar Garden. The EIR included acoustical analysis of the proposed project and determined that the project, because there's now only vehicles on one side of the garden rather than two sides of the garden, the actual decibels of vehicles is less after this project or would be less after this project than it is today. Next image. And I want to talk about the Plaza de Panama, 1915 image. I think you've all seen images like this. Very big, open space. It was asphalt with a decomposed granite topping. This is the way it looked for the second expo 20 years later. These are the reflecting pools that Kathy referred to. That little arch structure in the middle was temporary as well. These were raised with planters around them. They were a different configuration than what we're proposing. And as Kathy mentioned, the, the design of the new fountains are intended to recall this, but not to mimic it and not to create a false sense of history. And staff and the historic consultant both agree that we've achieved that with the design. This is showing automobiles. You know, we have even earlier photos that show traffic, but here's a view from the 50s showing that, the many years of parking in the, in the park and how this hasn't really been a friendly park environment for, for quite a while. And this is a postcard from 19, mid 1960s after the demolition of two of the buildings on the, on the Plaza de Panama. And you can see it's still, it's a parking lot and some lawn areas. This is even before the arcade was reconstructed. This is one of the views today, looking back south toward the Oregon Pavilion. Obviously, there's about in the range of 50 parking spaces today. There would be no parking and no through-traffic at all. Next image. This shows a rendering of what's proposed. The design of the reflecting pools has changed a little bit, but I want to point out that those are, those are half-inch-deep sheets of water that could be turned on or off if there's a large event in the, in the plaza. It's very adaptable. These basically flow in a sheet from east to west, and in times of drought or for function, they could be turned off. And this is another rendering, looking back north toward the Museum of Art. I also want to point out the double row of shade trees that we're showing. There were a single row of trees in 1915, but, and it, we have some photos that show that's where people sat, that's where the benches were, and that's where the use was. We think we need that here because this is a very, a very barren and hot place unless we provide some areas for people to sit and think about the plaza in front of the Ruben H. Fleet Theater around the large, big Evanson Fountain. That's really the most successful plaza in Balboa Park today because it has the perimeter shade areas and the open water feature area in the center. Now, the Plaza de California, what we call the Forgotten Plaza, because right now, it's not used because cars are driving through it. 7,000 cars a day drive through that space. This shows the plaza as it was. It was a, it's a great vantage point to see the, the spectacular California Building and Tower. This is the way it is today. We not only have the cars driving through, but we have these barricades, nonhistoric planters there to, to try to keep people away from the cars. But we constantly have conflicts of, I've, I've taken tours through this area where we've been trying to cross the road, and we've had pickup trucks speeding up and driving around us as we're halfway across the road. It's not a friendly environment for pedestrians. This is what we're proposing. No cars at all. No drive-through, no parking, no, no bollards in the middle there. Reintroducing the trees around the perimeter, reintroducing a compatible paving, and making this potentially a café area, a public space. It's not a public space today. It doesn't function that way. This is one of the barriers I talked about, part of the restoration we're doing. These fences were added, I'm not sure when, probably the 40s or 50s, to protect people from walking out into traffic because connecting the two halves of the California Building across El Prado is walking through these arches. And it's, you know, it's covered, and people would walk right out, and there'd be a car going 30 miles an hour that is completely blindsided. So these were added for public safety. These would be removed as part of the project. We don't need these anymore. We've taken the cars out. This is a view of the El Prado West. This is showing, you know, obviously a parade going through the middle during the expo. You can see the formal trees, spacing the trees and light fixtures. Next image. This is showing the way we have it today. You know, it's traffic. I don't think this is a pleasant park experience. And it was pointed out to me earlier, there's very few vantage points where you could see the California Tower because you have to walk inside these arcades on the West El Prado. If people are able to walk in the, what is now the street, again, they will have the view of that, of that tower that they don't have today. This is a view looking in the other direction. Again, you only see the tower from the plaza, or if you're standing in the street. And this next rendering is showing a pedestrian-only environment. And notice the light fixtures, which I'll talk about next. These historic light fixtures have been gone since right after the expo. We found out because they were made out of plaster. They were not, they were not permanent in any way. We're going to be using probably cast aluminum or cast metal of some kind, and we're reproducing 40 to 50 of these, which have not been seen in 100 years as part of the project. Luckily, we found the original drawings. They're in the downtown library, full-size, original drawings. This is the Esplanade area between the Oregon Pavilion and Plaza de Panama. It currently is, is traffic on either side of the, of the lawn median space. And this is a rendering of what that would be today, completely pedestrianized, 100%. The only thing we have here is, is the tram, which I'll touch on. Now, I want to, it's important to make reference to the precise plan because the precise plan had always indicated a parking structure behind the Oregon Pavilion, and it had always indicated there'd be a pedestrian connection, which you see in green. The precise plan is on the left, and you can see the route of pedestrian traffic, which actually went over the top of a recessed road that connected to the proposed parking garage. This was approved 20 years ago. On the right is our project. We're adopting that plan, but we're making it better. We're not only making that as a, as a pedestrian bridge, which is the full width of the road, but we are making a full 150-foot-wide area with some pathways that create a lid on this recessed roadway to provide an increased pedestrian connection. Yes, it changes the, the current routes we have, but if everybody knows that trying to walk from Palisades to Plaza, Plaza de Panama is a, is a, is a very indirect, uneventful traffic congested experience right now, and that will, that will be dealt with. This is showing the fact that the road is recessed. The upper image is from the precise plan, again, a 20-year-old document that still applies. We have more cars today than we did 20 years ago, so it's, getting cars and people separated is even more important today. And the lower image is what we're proposing. There are some retaining walls. There are some grade separations. They're necessary in order to get cars out from the pedestrian areas. This is an aerial photograph taken recently. You could see the, the parking lot behind the Oregon Pavilion, which is a surface lot. This is, was built in the 50s, and it was actually graded down. It used to be more of a level undeveloped area. They actually recessed it at about 10 to 15 feet. This is what we're proposing, a three-level underground parking structure, just under 800 spaces. It's going to be open air on the east side facing the canyon in order to make, to avoid the need for mechanical ventilation. It also provides daylight. We're going to have a planted wall on that side as well, a planted screening. But you can see on top the two-acre park. I believe it's 2.2 acres. This is new green space in Balboa Park. This is what is now a surface parking lot will be a green, a usable green space. Now, this is showing an earlier design. If you show the next image, is a plan view on the left of what we were working with initially. And we have Estrada Land Planning, Vicky Estrada is a consultant on the team, is here today as well, that has worked with us to refine the plan, as you see on the right, make it a little more rectilinear, a little more classical style to go with the Spanish Revival character of the park. So we have a large lawn panel, and the little white areas you see, maybe Charlie, you could point out, we have a, a small visitor center annex, which is proposed in the master plan. And then we have elevators that come up and stair, what we call the stair corps from the elevator, or from the parking structure. And then we have a new bathroom facility, restroom, which is replacing the restroom that is now in Palm Canyon, and maybe you could point that out. Most people, I think, know the Oregon Pavilion, the restroom across from the Oregon Pavilion. That was added in 1991. That's going to be removed as part of this project, and so we're actually freeing up more of Palm Canyon when we remove it, and we're replacing it with a larger, more updated facility, as we pointed out earlier. Keep in mind that this entire rooftop park is level with the International cottages Keep in mind that this entire rooftop park is level with the International Cottage's on the other side, and that Pan American Road that's, that separates them, which is now an automobile thoroughfare, is pedestrian-only. That's one of those pedestrian-only spaces we're creating. Okay? This is a view of the park, looking back toward what is the trellis structure. I'm going to have to speed through these, so. This is a view, an early rendering where we were proposing maybe palm trees along that Pan American Road. This next image is the view since Estrada Land Planning has gotten involved. We decided that shade trees are a more appropriate solution there. And also, you can see one of the trellis structures that's, that's one of the stairs coming up from the parking structure. Next image. Now, transportation. This is the historic transportation of Balboa Park during the expositions. On the left are the electricettes, these little three-mile-per-hour electric carts that were there, wicker. There were 200 of those during the expo. They, they utilized the roads, but they, they clearly were compatible with pedestrian use. And then on the upper right, you see they actually had a tram of their own. It looked like it was pulled by a little tractor, kind of back-to-back benches. And in 1935, they had these bender buses that were the only vehicles allowed on the expo grounds. What we're proposing, and the route you see in red, in the dash lines in red are the, are the possible expansions of the route, show the free tram that's going to be provided as part of this project, getting people, connecting the two plazas together. It'll be running more regularly. It'll be disabled accessible. It'll, it will be easy. It'll be step-on, step-off, rather than one door like we have now. Next image. I don't want to touch on these in detail. You have printed copies, but the new structures, the new, what we call ancillary structures in the park, are ones that we are following the standards, and staff agrees that they do meet the standards for new structures in a historic district. These are some of the principles. Next image. The restroom that we're removing is on the lower right. Again, that's 1991. The image on the upper left is International Cottage, which shows kind of the style. This is the style that we've adopted for our new restroom. Next image. This is an uncolored, or mostly uncolored rendering. It's not fully rendered, but it does show the general massing and the style of the, of the new restroom building. Next image. Another architectural precedent that we're using is for the visitor center. It's adjacent to these pueblo-style buildings. The, of course, the Balboa Park Club building was New Mexico building, 1915, and then the other building, Palisades building, was a 1935 building. So what we're adding is this small annex to the visitor center serving the Palisades area with a small restroom and maintenance service area behind it. And then we have this wraparound trellis as well, that's part of the structure. Next image. Now, the trellises are based on this, which is a historic 1935 trellis designed by Richard Requa, and this is our design, our, the concept for our design. This shows one of the two stairwells that comes up out of the parking structure, actually one of the three stairwells. There's two with this configuration. The dark areas on the roof are photovoltaic panels that are going to be part of an energy, energy system that's making this as sustainable as possible. This is the, what we call the picnic trellis. This is again the same kind of trellis structure, but you can see the two parking, or the, the elevators from the parking corps and the circular stairs. The tram stop is to the upper left there. Next image. Again, those are photovoltaic panels on the roof. This is what it looks like from the ground level. These are wood trellises, and then those are plaster columns with a slight taper to them, again, to mimic the historic. We're differentiating, but we're, we're trying to make it as compatible as possible. Next image. This shows one of the lower levels of the elevator core. Now, those are glass elevators. They're going to be screened with these perforated metal screens that are based on a, what we're calling the Requa grill. This is a grill that Richard Requa had documented in his plan, in his photographic documentation of Spain. And so we're, we're putting a contemporary spin on, on a Spanish Moorish design. At night, these will be lit from internal, and they'll be like a lamp at the, on the upper level. Just another rendered view of the restroom in the foreground and the, and the trellises. Again, the palm trees are being replaced by shade trees. Couple other small structures are based on this historic pergola that used to be in the Alcazar parking lot area. Next image. There's a little dumpster enclosure and small restroom. We're removing a small restroom that's nonhistoric, and so this is replacing it. The dumpsters right now are open-air. They're completely uncovered. They're going to have an enclosure. Next image. This is another view of it with stairs down to the archery range that we're providing. This is the valet booth, the solid area, as well as a waiting area trellis. This is going to be on the east side of the Alcazar parking lot. This is what it looks like from the ground level. Again, we're, we're being inspired by what was there historically. We're not mimicking it, but we're using the same architectural vocabulary. Alternatives I've been asked to discuss. There were 13 alternatives that were provided in the EIR. And of course, there's a no-project alternative as well. They were analyzed in detail. Every alternative had unmitigable impacts as well as benefits. Next image. These are some of the project supporters. It's important to look at this list because it's, it's incorrect to say that people on this list don't care about Balboa Park or are ignoring the Centennial Bridge impact. This is the Balboa Park Committee. This is members of the Historical Society, historians. There are a lot of groups here and institutions that support this project. Thank you. Next, getting close to the end here. This is the image I want to leave with you. As far as my presentation and discussion of this project, to me, what your role is, and I, I sat in that chair for six years, so I know what you're, what you'll be looking at and what your issues are. This shows the National Historic Landmark District, the boundary. That entire area you see is the National Historic Landmark District. Extremely important district. We have the areas you see in, next image. Areas you see in, in red are the only two parts of the project that don't fully comply with the standards. We have the bridge, and I'm showing the area between the bridge and the California Building, and as well as a portion of the Centennial Road that was deemed to be not significant, but it didn't fully comply with the standards. Those two areas in red are the only areas of anything that we're proposing that do not fully comply with the standards, as interpreted by Historic Resources staff, as well as the independent historic study by Verplank.